Okay, we're gonna call the board meeting to order. Please stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Bell?
Here.
Trustee Burns?
Here.
Trustee Coleman?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Juzinski?
Here.
Trustee Williams?
Here.
All right, the approval of minutes. I'll ask for a motion to approve the proceedings of the board meeting for February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. So, second. Move by trustee Juzinski?
Oh, well, I didn't know that. Because I, okay, so you know, I had talked to the lawyer, there was no need for executive session, but now you're saying they have minutes. You can tell me that. I see.
And also, Mr. Mayor, I sent an email requesting personnel.
Okay.
An update on litigation. I sent an email.
Okay, the litigation is part of, is going to be presented in the week, because there's still some updates to be presented on that. And the personnel part, I was told there's no need for executive session on that personnel issue that you had.
Mr. Mayor, how can somebody else tell you whether or not personnel is?
Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams. Trustee Williams. I said that we're not gonna go into executive session at this time because of those reasons. Now you wanna go back and tell me what somebody should've said to me or whatever. That's not, I'm not gonna, that's not, that's not a split at this time. I did talk to the lawyer, and she did tell me about this litigation, and it's not, and there's no update on that right now.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor. I will address my concerns in open session. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll ask for a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, it was moved by trustee Juzinski and seconded by trustee Coleman on the motion to approve the proceedings of board meeting for two-fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Juzinski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment. All questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter concerning the business of the village of South Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak for up to three minutes and may not engage in debate, time, reply, and rebuttal. I will answer all questions once the public comments have been concluded. Please state your name when you come up, and after you state your name, the clock will start.
Yeah, you have to. We don't need you to get it. Or you can vote. Okay.
Just give a second.
Yes.
Just give a second.
No questions? Okay. All right, and towards the motions, the mayor's report. Just a few items, quick items. First of all, May, March thirteenth, we celebrated our sixty-sixth anniversary as a city, as incorporated city here in South Village. So, I just want everyone to understand and know that. Second item is the Easter egg hunt. Easter egg hunt will be April eighth at one P.M. And it'll be right here behind Village Hall, well, out there in the grass behind Village Hall. There's some flyers in the back, but the groups and the ages are from zero all the way up to twelve. So, there's some flyers back there if there, if you have any or you need some more. I do have some, so we can get you some more made, but I think they're in the back. Sure. And the next thing is the, from Bloom Township. Beginning April third, Bloom Township, which is right there on Holstein Street, will be undergoing a major renovation to update their facility. The construction includes replacing the building, original HVAC system, upgrading lights, removing the old wallpaper, and rebuilding the existing transition windows to be more comfortable. ADA compliant encounter space. Contact has been awarded to expect, contracts have been awarded to experienced general contractors, CMM group whose subcontract includes more than forty percent minority-owned businesses. During that time, all business handled in the main building will be conducted at the temporary home seven-twelve Holstein in Chicago Heights. Seven-twelve is just south of the Township building on the west side of the street. At this location, they'll be able to continue all services and programs without interruption. If you have any, any questions, they can be reached at seven oh eight, seven five four, ninety-four hundred. And also it says, please like us on Facebook for ongoing news and updates. Okay, that's all that I have. Next item is our village clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be brief this evening. First thing I would like to draw to your attention, I put on your desk front a copy of the winning entry for the village sticker, and that's the item that looks like this. The thing this year was promoting peace in the village of South Village, and this is the one that a young person provided. So, it will, it's gone to the printer already today, and they will meet our May first deadline as we stipulated that we were ready to go back to pre-pandemic times in terms of the schedule, so it will be here for us for that. We have about a thousand stickers left from last year because we thought that we needed to order more because we were gonna go with a company who was going to really be in force to help us, and then that fell through. So, we have about a thousand. So, last year I ordered thirty-five hundred. I would like to go back maybe and just order twenty-five hundred of these stickers, if that's okay with everyone. And then the next item that I put on your desktop is for Earth Day. I mentioned Earth Day before to you, and I'm just hoping that you all have it on your calendars already to come out and to assist us on that day. Okay? And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report. No, it does not. There's one other thing that I would like to apprise each of you, and that is on Earth Day is that Saturday, the twenty-second. Student Government Day is that following Tuesday night. That's the board meeting. We did it last year, and we can do it again this year. It's just putting forth a lot of effort, and all of the directors, attorneys, engineer, all of us will have a student who will mentor, that we will, in a sense, be a mentor to, more so than anything. They will represent you that day at the board meeting, and so, once again, I am asking that everyone have a report, a written report, even if it's just to say, my name is and this is what I do. Okay? The half, the youngsters have to have a report to give on your behalf. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That completes my report.
Okay. Village Clerk Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, trustees. The cash balance as of March fourteenth is as follow in the unrestricted funds. The corporate account, one million sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars. The reserve account, eight hundred and twenty-one thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The water sewer account, two million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars. The water E-pay account, six hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars. The senior center account, six thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, for a total unrestricted funds of four thousand, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty, seventy-five dollars. And the restricted funds is as follow. The CN account, twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. The DEA account, fourteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars. South Village housing, seventeen dollars. The TIF account, two hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars. The tow account, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. The holding account, eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-three. Vinnie Money account, nine hundred dollars. The MFT account, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars, for a total restricted funds of three hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars. That concludes my report.
Question, trustee Bell?
Mr. Finch, that, the line of credit needs to be paid back by May one, correct?
March thirty-first.
Yeah, it's all lined up, ready to go?
Yes.
Thank you.
Has a question?
Just in March thirty-first?
March thirty-first. Hey, corporate counsel, Ms. Amber Sammerson from Ashland Blip.
Good evening, and report this evening.
Okay, village engineer, Melanie Owo from Robinson Engineering.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees. The only item that I have is just to let you know that I have all the documentation and signatures that I need for the CDVG application, and so I will be submitting it to Cook County tomorrow, and once that's done, I will provide a copy of the complete submittal to the village clerk for the, for the village's records. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, the enforcement department, police department. I'm sorry, you're not here.
I have his report.
Oh, you do have it?
Yeah. He had to leave one of them.
Okay, go ahead then, chief.
For the period between three-one through three-fourteen of twenty-three, the police department responded for more than four hundred and twenty-four calls for service. During that same period, officers made seventeen arrests and then conclude their report.
Okay. And now, the fire department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees. For the period of February twenty-third through March tenth, the fire department responded to ninety-three calls for service. There were no major incidents, and got firefighter David Drexler has passed all his tests and is now a certified firefighter. Congratulations to him. Just a reminder that there is no open burning allowed in Cook County. You must have it in a certified fire pit with a lid over it. There will be fines going out for those that are found in violation of this, and so, this is the warning. There will be a pancake breakfast at the fire station on April second. It's free to everyone. We just want everyone to come out and enjoy, thanks to a very generous donor. And that concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Clerk, and Board of Trustees, and always, stay safe and God bless.
Okay, question on the pancake breakfast, is this from eight to one?
It's from eight to one, yes, I'm sorry. And at Easter, our bunny will be here.
All right, Director of Operations, Director Anthony Finch.
Thank you, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees. Just a quick update. The sale of two-one-three-zero-zero Mark Collins has been posted in the newspaper. Also, any buyers that are interested in purchase, the property located two-one-three-zero-zero Mark Collins are not required to have a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers. We anticipate to have a TIF meeting sometime mid-April. Hopefully, I get back some paperwork within this week or early next week to make that happen in April. As the weather continue to improve, you will see public works out doing B-box digs, coal patching, branch pickup, and they're gonna be starting doing stump removals. In another week or so, we have about a hundred and ten stump removals that we are gonna be working on, trying to get those done before April. Also, I'm waiting on the quote back from Selton Fox. I was asked by the mayor to look into some county firm to assist with the audit. Selton Fox was the only one that I mentioned last week that may have availability. The owner, or one of the partners, I was gonna say, is working on giving me a quote, which I hopefully have that by Friday, so I can bring it to the board next Tuesday. It was asked for me to look into ClearGov. I did that module that was referenced by the person in charge of finance department, the seventeen thousand. I will be sending out that information again for review, and if the board desire, then I will bring it back for a vote, but it is seventeen thousand dollars annually for the budget module. Unfortunately, several, several trucks in the public works department has been sent out in the last week and a half for repairs, ranging from broken belts to, as we says, Monday, an alternator went out. With that, that concludes my report.
Trustee Bell?
Mr. Finch, would it be advantageous for the village to hire a mechanic for its personal?
Unfortunately, that's not a position in the CBA, so I don't think we can even entertain that at this point until, unless we go back up to CBA, but that position is not in the CBA, so to answer your question, no.
Uh, community development director, Antonio Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Clerk, Board of Trustees, department heads, guests. Just wanted to let everybody know about the volunteer opportunities that are coming up for the community, partnering with Habitat for Humanity. We'll be cleaning up properties throughout the village and working on other small projects. And so, the good news is, is that we, they'll accept anywhere from ages fourteen plus. So, you know, it's a good event, you can come out and do some good with, you know, with your children, grandchildren. And if you have any questions concerning the, the volunteer opportunities, you can call Holly Pope. Her number is seven oh eight, two-three-one, zero-seven-five-eight. And they have a sign-up link, so just come in and see me and I can, or email me, aidcooper@southvillage.org, and I can send you the link for those volunteer opportunities, because they will be, there's two dates set already for June seventeenth and September sixteenth, and it starts from nine A.M. to one P.M., and sometimes we even barbecue, so I don't know if we might do that. I know Madam Clerk, and she's actually put that together, but I don't know if we're gonna do that, so we'll, we'll see, but, and with, with that being said, it's just really good opportunity to have a lot of fun, and it's, and you're doing a lot of good for the community. And, and we'll actually be meeting at the library at nine A.M., at the McConaughey Public Library. It's on Jeffrey Avenue. Also, we're gonna be having a homebuyer seminar. It's coming March eighteenth. It's gonna be here at the Village Hall from ten A.M. to noon, and then following that is also another homebuyer workshop, which is through Habitat for Humanity, and one exciting thing about Habitat for Humanity is they have zero percent interest mortgages, and it's all income-based, so, and basically, what you finance, and it's just the materials that they purchase. They don't charge you for labor, and they got zero percent mortgages, so it's really an affordable way for someone to have a house and actually, you know, put some sweat equity into it. So, that's really a, a good opportunity for someone to be able to take advantage of that, and that's at the library, that's this Saturday, March eighteenth, for both of those events. That one will be from noon to two P.M. I had an opportunity to discuss the program development for the, the home, actually, the homes that will be selling for, through a seal bid auction and through RFP process with Meg and Matt, so we're actually working on that right now. We should have something solid for the board that we can present, and we have a program that's gonna facilitate that development agreement. It'll go coincide with it, so, so we, I'm really excited about that coming, going forward. Last, from the period of June first through, June first, twenty-twenty-two through March fourteen, twenty-twenty-three, business licenses for the community development department, we've collected sixty-one thousand, six hundred and three dollars and three cents. For contractors' licenses, sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We've, we've registered two hun, total of two-hundred-and-eighty-one contractors. In-house permit revenue was fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. We've written two-hundred-and-sixty-eight of those permits during that time period. Safe bill revenue was twenty-two thousand dollars and ninety-nine cents. We've written four-hundred-and-thirty-two permits, and for tickets written and code enforcement is nine hundred and twenty-nine, for a total due of sixty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents, and we've been paid eighteen thousand, thirty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents. So, really excited about the things that are going on in community development department, and looking forward to add team members, so with that, that ends my report.
Okay, any questions? Okay, enforcement standing committees and trustee comments. Public health and safety, trustee Gary Bell.
Mr. Mayor, I have no report on my committee. I'm still waiting for some members, but it does look hopeful. I mean, that's all I have to say.
Okay, public services, trustee Aritha Byrne.
Hi, yes, I will be having a public service meeting on this one Friday, March seventeen, at six P.M. in Waverly, New York. So, you want to participate, please leave a comment.
Okay. Board of supervisory, trustee Alvin Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a partial summary of a report of February twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three meeting. It started at seven, seven P.M. Those in attendance were myself, Carol Coleman, David Fields, David Smith, Frank Harvey, James Harvey, Raven Johnson Smith. Guests were yourself, Mayor Virtus, trustee Debbie Williams, and director Anthony Finch. Director Finch was there for a presentation of, on three items, three items on the agenda. However, I'm only gonna talk about one for the sake of time, that one being regarding ordinance section seven-eight dash fifty-five A of the municipal code titled Use of Public Water Service. Director Finch discovered breaches in our current system for regulating the village's water usage. These breaches involve the practices of using unregulated meters installed or not, or no meters installed at all, that have over the years resulted in loss of village revenue. Director Finch not only brought these discoveries to my committee's attention, but the corporates as well, and in attempt to find a remedy for the breaches, he brought suggestions to the committee. The members of the committee expressed concerns about some of the suggestions, but still did not dispute the fact that a remedy is needed. After much deliberation, it was decided that the subject be continued to the next committee meeting, committee meeting with more information to be provided by Director Finch to help the committee in a decision, in their decision-making. I applaud Director Finch in bringing this matter to our attention, and for once and for all, we can hopefully begin to address this issue that is vital to the service of our village residents. If there are not any questions, this concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Budget and finance, trustee Roger Grant.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, housing and developmental relations, trustee Sheri Juzinski.
Thank you, Mayor, and all of our.
Community development, trustee Debbie Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The soft talk deadline is tomorrow, the fifteenth of every month. So far, I have received no articles that are new from last month, so please, if you can, please get to anything you want in the public to know by tomorrow, the fifteenth. There is COVID shots available at the library on March seventeenth, St. Patrick's Day, the new Moderna and Pfizer boosters from two to four P.M. Anybody who wants a new booster, no appointment necessary, just come to the library between two and four. In the liveliness of St. Patrick's Day, Crossroads Church is offering corned beef and cabbage dinner for fourteen dollars at Crossroads from four to six. Feel free to stop by after work or on your way home from work, and it's always a delicious meal, and it is used as a fundraiser for our church as well. On May sixth, there will be a fundraiser for our own trustee Gary Bell. Gary Bell, we're doing a benefit for trustee Bell, because he's working on getting a kidney transplant, so anybody who wants to work with us on that benefit, contribute to the benefit, or work with us in any kind of way. It will be on May sixth at the Moose Lodge, but there's work that has to be done between now and then. We all wish trustee Bell well in his, in his health, but we are going to work towards helping him get his kidney. And finally, it's disheartening that the trustees are being ignored and disrespected, so this is my report. The forensic audit, the board told the auditors, was told that the auditors would have the necessary info by February twentieth and the audit completed by the end of March. No update on bank recs or PBC list, which is provided by client. After several requests, we are entitled to this information by ordinance. We need to address the allegations and accusations listed in three letters provided to the board. We need to take these allegations seriously. Mayor mentioned an investigation is in process. The board has not been included in the process, even though many of us have also been falsely accused in those letters. I have also asked for updates on litigation, particularly with regards to an employee complaint and complaints and investigation, which appears to be on the billing statements by the attorney presented to the board for payment, and we have no idea what this is in regards to. And when we ask questions, we should be able to get answers. Mr. Mayor, I'm asking that you call the board to direct the operations manager to post the positions of finance director and treasurer immediately. We've been asking for this for some time, tomorrow, if possible. Please ask the attorney to review previous ordinance with regards to the forensic audits. I believe two audits were approved at that time. Since the allegations of possible theft, allegations of money missing, several people being involved in those allegations, I would myself like to see that audit focus around fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, when that audit is completed. That audit has been in process since September of twenty-twenty-two. This is March twenty-twenty-three, and we can't even find out where we are with the bank recs. The audit cannot even begin until the bank recs are completed. It's a simple question to which the trustees are getting absolutely no answers, and we ask time and time again. I'm suggesting the forensic audit focus on that year immediately after our auditors are finished with the twenty-twenty-year audit. We have already lost a sidewalk grant for seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars due to the audits being behind. That could not continue to happen. We are in jeopardy of losing more money. We are in jeopardy of not being able to apply for more grants, and we need to, we need to take rain on this finance department. I would like to see the operations manager be included in all of the operations of the finance department, and like I said, Mr. Mayor, if you could please poll the board, because you are the one that gives direction to post these positions, and I hope that the board would agree that we need to post these positions and get someone in these positions as soon as possible, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Presentations, the board's resolution. They're not here. Hopefully, you got, you got.
I mean, did you listen to?
I heard everything.
You're gonna respond to it at the end, sir? Or you're not gonna respond?
Trustee.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee.
Trustee, Mr. Mayor.
Why do you, what, wouldn't you put the show on?
No, I wanted to go into the session. We just, for the third time, said no. You could've done this in the session.
Well, I was told that's not an executive session.
That's because the attorney is for you.
She's one of everybody.
No.
That's why, then you asked me when I didn't say something. Because you don't run this.
Mr. Mayor, I asked you to poll the board.
Even though you said, but, okay.
And you're not gonna do it.
Thank you, thank you. Because you said, the trustees said. You want trustees.
I asked you to poll the board, and it might not all the rest of them feel.
And I told you, and I said, first of all, you have to come up with. Because you said, the trustees said, you want trustees.
I asked you to poll the board and find out how the rest of them feel.
And I told you and I said, first of all, you have to come up with a job description and everything before you can put anything out for that. That has to be done first.
We hired a human resource consultant.
I'm not going to go back and forth. I am not going to go back and forth with you. I've been in my office all day. You can come back and say one word.
Because you don't answer emails.
You don't come back and say one word. I've been in my office all week. You didn't come back and say, but you want to wait and get out here so we can put it out in front? I have a problem.
I don't need to be in your office.
But I will not sit up here and go back and forth with you. That won't happen.
Mr. Mayor, we can argue all day long. I just want to know, are we going to get a finance director?
Do something.
Are we going to get a finance director posting positions? That's all I want to know.
I've been in my office all day. You didn't come back and say nothing. You saw me all day today.
So you prefer to see me in person than answer an email that copies everybody that's involved in that?
As I stated, we're not going back and forth.
Yes, sir. That's okay. Every Tuesday night, I will have the same report.
You can.
And I will.
Okay, thank you.
And it'll be on my Facebook.
Moving forward, I'll ask, did you say you have a report from? Is that from? Oh. Okay. Okay, I have a report here from Executive Board meeting, the Senior Advisory Council. Our next meeting for the Senior Advisory Council is Thursday, April thirteenth at five PM in the senior center. All are welcome. Again, times for the game nights are as follows, from four to eight PM and every second and fourth Fridays. And it has started back. Come out and join us for the games such as Big Whiz, Bunco, Domino's and more. Breakfast Bingo is back. Every first and third Fridays from eleven to one in the senior center. And it has started back. And the next one is Friday. So come out and have breakfast and play bingo with us. Also, our first casino trip for the year has been booked for Wednesday, May third. Costs will be forty dollars. And the casino will be giving back twenty-five dollars for gaming and food on arrival. Bus leaves at ten AM from the senior center. So we will be asking guests to arrive between nine and nine-thirty for donuts and coffee and boarding. Also, Cena will be coming to the senior center Monday, April twenty-fourth and May twenty-second at nine to twelve PM. Be sure to spread the word. Thank you. And that concludes my report submitted by Emma Farman, Chairman of the Senior Advisory Committee. Thank you. I'll ask for a presentation in order to ask for motion to rescind the approval of the resolution for Salt Village and Torrance Avenue corridor study made and passed on February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
So I'll move second.
Moved by trustee Jezeski, second by trustee Williams. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Trustee Burns? Trustee Coleman?
I'm standing.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jezeski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now I ask for a motion to approve the resolution for salt trailer Torrance Avenue corridor study and its subsequent RFP.
So I'll move second.
Moved by trustee Jezeski, second by trustee Bell. Any questions?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jezeski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Okay. I'll ask for a motion to approve transfers, payroll and accounts payable distribution in the combined amount of four hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and forty-three dollars and seven cents.
So I'll move.
And authorize the finance prosecutors to pay. That's okay. Moved by trustee Jezeski, second by trustee Bell. Any questions? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Trustee Williams moved and second by trustee Williams. I'm sorry. Moved by trustee Jezeski, second by trustee Williams. Any questions?
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jezeski?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now I'll ask for a motion to approve the Assistant Chief of Administration position for the fire department in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Second.
Moved by trustee. Okay, can you second? Okay, trustee Bell, and second by trustee Coleman. Any questions?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Williams.
The agenda asks for the approval in the amount of forty-two thousand seven hundred. The job description says forty-two thousand five hundred. Can we just amend that job description to go along with what the agenda says? Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions?
Trustee Bell?
Yes.
Trustee Burns?
Yes.
Trustee Coleman?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jezeski?
Yes.
Trustee Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. General comments on the mayor? I don't have any comments. But I will say this to all trustees. I am here. I don't like cold questions at the last minute. No one does. But if you have something that you want to discuss with me, I'm here every single day. I may not be here early in the morning, but I'm here every single day. And I also have email. And every trustee has my email address. But to spring something at the last or whatever the case may be, I don't do that. I wouldn't do that to anybody. So if you have something that you want to talk or discuss and bring it out in the meeting, please talk to me first before either think about putting it in or bringing it out or put it on the media. That being said, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Who made the motion? Did anybody make a second?
Second.
Moved by trustee Bell, second by trustee Williams. Not a question. Please talk. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Mr. Coleman and Mr. Williams, could you please give the, and Miss Williams, I'm sorry. Could you please give the clerk your reports?
Absolutely.